Ready? Good evening, sorry I'm a few minutes late. Anyway, welcome to City Placerville City Council Meeting, regular meeting, November 14, 2017. Would you all rise and pledge allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Here.
And Councilmember Wilkins is noted as absent.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's see here, announcements and presentations to the public, brief comments by City Council. I'll start over here.
Just like to welcome everyone, it's nice to see a sea of new faces in the audience tonight, and I can't believe the holidays are almost upon us, so just wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving with your families next week, and thanks for being with us tonight.
Mayor?
Well, I just want to mention the memorial plaque dedication that we had Sunday, and I just, again, want to say, I came by tonight and I got to see it all lit up, and it is just absolutely the most beautiful, beautiful monument, and I just thank everybody who had a hand in making this happen, and it was, it was a beautiful day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry for the loud announcement earlier, we're not used to these microphones being quite so effective. I would also like to recognize everybody that was involved in this past Sunday's dedication of the Vietnam Monument. It was a tremendous effort that has spanned years and years of hard work and dedication. The folks that have been involved over the years from Community Pride, led quite frequently by Kathy Lishman, who's in the audience this evening, they did a beautiful job in arranging the event, the invitations to all the various folks that were involved, setting that all up, getting us a little brass band to add to the festivities, just an awesome job, short timeframe, from the time the monument was actually completed until the time it was put in, they did a great job. And I'd also like to take a minute to thank Steve Yule and all those folks that have worked under and with Steve on this. As was noted during the dedication ceremony this past Sunday, Steve is probably the person in his almost 32 years with the city that has been the guardian of these plaques, and he has seen them come up off the street as the trees have been removed, he saw them go into storage, 10 years ago he worked to put them on a temporary display in the back room of this very building where they've sat for so long, and he's been, he was instrumental in the last year and a half in bringing together a whole variety of different organizations in the community, city staff members, the city council, and of course, working hand in hand with Community Pride to make sure that this event was, was worthy of what it represents. And I think we have now given those plaques the home that they, they deserve and will be there for many, many years and generations to show that Placerville has deep respect for its veterans.
We've got our guys back on Main Street.
We got them back on Main Street. So, thank you very much, Steve, and everyone that's helped you. On a little lighter note, I'd also like to recognize the good folks out at Goldbug Park. They had their Halloween festivities on Halloween weekend, of all things, and they did quite well, and they are considering doing it next year. They had about 80 to 100 folks show up for the adult party, and they had a large number of kids come out on Sunday for the children's event. So, thank you to all those hardworking volunteers and all the members of the community that continue to support their work. Thank you.
That is a great event out at Goldbug Park, very unique.
Do you have any announcements? Okay. I would like to echo that about Goldbug Park and the Halloween thing, also our downtown merchants who had their big extravaganza on Halloween, on Halloween Day, for all the kiddies, lots of folks downtown, it's always real exciting to see all those people downtown having a good time. I would like to announce that the Festival of Lights, which is the Friday after Thanksgiving, it's, I don't know what day, that's like the 25th? What is Thanksgiving? Anyway, whatever the Friday is after Thanksgiving, at 5 o'clock, or at 6 o'clock, it starts at 5, the lights go on on the tree at 6. For anybody that hasn't done it before, it's really cool, we shut down Main Street, everybody hangs out, there's things to do, people are singing, it's all very Christmas carol-y, so...
And Santa Claus.
And Santa Claus is, it's fantastic. So, anyway, I just want to let you know about that, Friday after the Thursday, so while you're digesting the leftovers, head down there, watch them light up the tree, that is really cool. I want to express my gratitude, I was able to not only be at the Vietnam Veterans, Vietnam Memorial Celebration on Sunday, I got to do the Veterans Day Observance up at the county at that wonderful facility they have up there, and thank all our, our veterans and all the, all the good work they do and their service to the country. So, anyway, that was a lot of fun. Okay, so, that's us. Introduction of a new police officer, always an exciting time, Eric Taylor. That's a great name for a police officer, by the way. Chief Ortega, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we are going to formally welcome and introduce Officer Eric Taylor, who is sitting to my left with his family, and I'll just read a brief bio that I prepared. Officer Eric Taylor was appointed to the Placerville Police Department on October 15, 2017. He's currently assigned to the field training program where he'll be riding and training, riding with a training officer to learn the ins and outs of serving the city of Placerville as a police officer. Prior to joining the Placerville Police Department, Eric was an on-call deputy sheriff assigned to the jail for the Placer County Sheriff's Department. Eric is a graduate of Ponderosa High School...
Yay!
...and CSU Sacramento, where he received a Bachelor of Science in Social Science. Eric graduated from the Sacramento County Sheriff's Academy in November of 2013. Eric is married to Lindsay, Eric and Lindsay have four children, Maddox, 11, Olivia, 10, Parker, 8, and Kyla, 4. And we are very happy to welcome Eric to the Placerville family. So, Eric, if you'd come up, please, and be formally sworn in. Mr. Mayor, that's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and congratulations. Officer Taylor is joining, as I like to point out, one of the oldest established police forces in the state of California, and probably one of the oldest west of the Mississippi River. So, you are joining a long line of very good folks that have helped protect this community from all sorts of things, and we'll be, we'll be looking for you out there on the streets of Placerville. Anyway, well, thank you very much. Okay. One more, give him a hand, yeah. Wow. Here I, here I thought they were here for me, but no.
There's a big following.
Oh, not the little girl, too. Aw. Man.
It's a good-looking family, isn't it? That's a good-looking family.
Somebody left a...
Oh, somebody le, oh, well, it's the young lady. One of, there's a, there's a hoodie.
A hoodie.
I think that one young lady's going to be a handful. Okay. Is this thing on? Oh, alright. We do, we do not have a closed session, we perp because we did not have a closed session. Alright.
Very unusual.
Would someone...
I would like to note that it is the city attorney's birthday.
Oh...
Happy birthday, John!
Happy birthday, John!
You know, this, this is a great day, we got a new police officer, it's John's birthday. Since we're, we're observing birthdays, it is my sister Paula's birthday today, so this is a great day, all the way around. Okay. Would someone wish to adopt this agenda?
Move the agenda.
I would like to.
Go ahead, Patty, I will second your motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Ceremonial matters. Oh, this is a good one.
It is a good one.
A proclamation of appreciation for Bayside Church. Okay, okay, good. Oh, let's see, it's a proclamation of the City Council of the city of Placerville proclaiming...
You can proclaim it.
Proclaiming appreciation for Bayside Church. Whereas, Bayside Church of Placerville is a valued public, private partner, and an asset to the community through their service to the city of Placerville and the Placerville Police Department, and whereas, Bayside Church of Placerville has assisted with updating and beautifying the appearance of the Placerville Police Department building during Bayside Church of Placerville Community Service Day, and whereas, Bayside Church of Placerville members cheerfully volunteered their Sunday, October 8, 2017, to serve the police, the Placerville Police Department. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Placerville, with deep appreciation, does hereby and sincerely thank Bayside Church of Placerville for their service to the Placerville Police Department on October 8, 2017. Hear, hear!
Mr. Mayor, if we could have Pastor Al Soto and Pastor Betsy Vanderpool come forward and receive your proclamation. Pastor Soto is the head pastor, and Pastor Betsy Vanderpool is one of his assistant pastors.
The front of the police station looks so nice, just all spruced up, my goodness.
I was just going to ask the chief if he'd tell us what they did.
When he comes back. Oh, you forgot to sign it.
It's a really busy day, there's no excuse for not signing it. He's a little flustered. Poor John.
We'll ask when he gets back. Because it does look great.
It does.
How'd they decide on that project?
I don't know, we could ask them.
Okay, we've got all kinds of questions, chief.
We have questions. Yes. Yeah, sure, come on up.
Okay, I thought, I thought it was done, but I'll answer anything you like.
Well, we want to talk to him.
Well, we want to talk to it. Pastor, too.
The question was asked, oh, go ahead.
Well, we were just curious, how did you decide on this particular project?
Both myself and Betsy have been chaplains, serving with the Eldorado Law Enforcement Chaplaincy, got a chance to meet Chief Ortega, we adopted the police department a year ago as one of our Christmas compassion projects, and talking to Chief Ortega, he said, hey, it'd be great to do some things around the physical facilities, and we said, we'll do it.
Oh, okay.
And so, yeah, it was, it was quite a pleasure.
So, you did landscaping and?
And painting.
And painting.
So, we did the trim paint, and got one corner that was really bugging the chief, which I can't blame him, and now it looks really nice. Yeah, and I, I'm new to the community, I've been here about 18 months, and I just, first, I wanted to say, everywhere I've gone, I've had the privilege opportunity of serving the community at some level, both Betsy and I served in Lincoln before we came here to serve here, and I just, I just want to say that we have one of the finest police departments, one of the greatest chiefs, this man is really impressive, both character-wise and what have you. He doesn't know I'm saying this, so, but I really mean that, the, the men and women who serve us, and I just want to say thank you to all of you. I love Placerville, my aunt and uncle lived here for years. I never dreamed that I'd live in a place like this, and Bayside's mission is not just to do church in the four walls of a building, but to serve our community and attempt to make a difference, and we just thank you for allowing us to do a little, our little part here with the police department, hopefully years from now, we'll be able to look back and say, hey, some good things happened, you know, but I really want to say that, thank you so much.
We'll continue to partner with you, and thank you so much, we really do appreciate it, thank you.
Well, thank you.
I have to tell you, I didn't know you were going to do this project, and a day or two after, after you'd done it, I was, I lived near there, and I was driving by, I was going around that corner, and I did a double take, and I thought, what's different? Something's, something's different, and the front door hit me, and it just looked so nice and neat and crisp, and it was like, wow, it just made a real impact, even, didn't even know this project was going to go on. So, thank you so much, and it's people like you who see a need and give of themselves to benefit the community, and especially our law enforcement, you know, thank you so much for supporting them, because they, you know, work to support all of us day in and day out, so it's lovely that the community supports them.
Well, I thank you for that. I grew up in an inner-city context, was a Bay Area boy, and I get to live up here and do the things that I get to do, and I'll tell you what, it's a blessing.
Where did you live in the Bay?
I was born, well, I was born and raised in Mountain View before the Silicon Valley became the Silicon Valley, and then San Jose, I pastored for 20 years. So...
Big change, so, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
I would like to just add, too, I mentioned this at the veterans' service on Saturday, and I was speaking directly about the, at that, in that specific case, about the veterans' groups, and how there are amongst those groups of people here in this community that you just, they just do things. You can count on them to do things, in the community with folks, projects like this one, the faith community is another one, you can just count on them to do things, and the service clubs and the individuals in this town, and I called it, on Tuesday, or Saturday, I called it a, a bottomless well of giving, because it just seems that, no matter how many times you go to that well to draft from it, there's always something coming up, and it's always a good thing. So, it's something the community should really be proud of, and I think it's one of the things that makes living around here just fantastic. I, I'm an East Bay kid, I grew up in Crockett, which is up by Vallejo, but, but, and Crockett's okay, but I like it here better. Alright, so, thank you very much. Okay. Public comment, brief, non-agenda items, okay. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under very specific circumstances. The mayor, me, reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes, I will. The mayor will recognize you, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. Don't say anything you wouldn't want to have somebody say about you, be nice, you can be critical, just be nice while you're doing it. So, anyway, do we have any written correspondences? I actually received two, and unfortunately, I did not bring them. One was from a young, young man named Ryan, who is from the Bay Area, is in the fourth grade, learning California history, sent me a bunch of questions about Placerville, and I won't, you know, get into what they were, I responded to the letter. So, that was a correspondence I received, and I want to officially recognize it. I also received a notice, and I will, I will not remember the woman's name, there's a lady up in Escatine that's going to be 105...
Oh, yes.
Mabel.
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 Something.
I've been to her birthday parties.
Yeah, well, she's had 104 of them before this, so you've had a lot of opportunities.
They have a lot, they have a lot of fun up there.
This is, what?
Does it run, yeah?
What, so far, apparently Thursday, I mean, shouldn't jinx it, but yeah, it's going Thursday. Anyway, 100, 2:30 up at Escatine. So, I was invited, I cannot be, be here, so the vice mayor's going to go.
I will attend your place.
I'm going to go.
Are you going to go, Daisy?
We will celebrate Mabel on Thursday.
Yes, Mabel's 105.
That's awesome.
That's amazing.
That, you know, that could be a beer.
I'm not going to.
Mabel 105, I'm telling you, somebody in town that makes beer should make that beer, Mabel 105.
We'll pass that message.
I'm not even, I'm not even going to copyright it or anything, it goes out there for free. Okay. Does anybody have any oral comments they'd like to make?
After that, that's hard to follow, John.
Oh, Kathy's going to do a great job, I know that.
She's a troupe.
Does the microphone, yeah.
Is it new?
Are these all new? Kathy Lishman, Chair of Community Pride, I came tonight to thank the city, to thank the city staff, the city council, for your part in making that monument a reality. I gave you each a program, in case you weren't there, so you can see some of the special thank yous, and I, I kind of wanted, the major donors, the city of Placerville, your contribution toward it helped make it happen, the veterans' groups, six of them, their contributions started the ball rolling, and Pat Lakey from the Mountain Democrat started the ball rolling by writing a couple of articles about my whining about funding. And Community Pride, we contributed the mitigation money we got for that site, plus the mitigation money that we got for the garden that was down by Kentucky Fried Chicken. But I want to point out, too, I mean, I came here tonight to thank the city, and I want to thank specifically Bob Pine, who is not here tonight, he helped with the installation of the monument, and he helped set up for, for the ceremony, the dedication. But I wanted specifically to thank Steve Yule, who is so modest always, and it was wonderful working with him, his perseverance and his patience, because it was not an easy project, and I just want to thank Steve, and I want to embarrass him. And then, on the special thank yous, Dave Brazelton, Western Sign installed it, Doug Veerkamp did the work along the site to get it ready, Bruce Harkey Construction built the base, and it took him a lot more time than he thought it would, Foothill Associates is who Community Pride had worked with to hold the public hearings, come up with the design, do the plans and specifications. The Placerville Parks Division, it goes without saying, but they, kudos to them. Mark Acuna got the electrical, he worked out the electrical so it wasn't so costly to us, and he knew what we had already. And Patty Borelli, and Marilyn Ferguson and Josette provided background and history and, and information that we needed. April Evans Design designed the brochure, her name is really April Lishman, but she goes in her business by April Evans Design, she designed the brochure. Dave Soave, Dave Davidson, and Robert Primusero are veterans who went above and beyond to the help that they gave. And Santi Sabato and the Ponderosa High School Brass Quintet. But I wanted to come to thank you, also to point out that there is a Phase 3, that I will be checking with April Evans Design about designing a new brochure, and, and we're hoping, oh, and then I said to Wendy, maybe we could get that fire hydrant moved, you know. The monument...
Okay, Kathy, you're just really pushing.
No, I'm kidding. The monument is beautiful, and it's so beautiful at night.
It is, it's just gorgeous.
But I just came tonight to thank, to thank the city, and to let you know who else in the community, it was a big part of this project. Anyway, we'll be back, but I'm hoping, I'm hoping that with the monument in, we will generate more enthusiasm for the rest of the project. Thank you.
I think that'll happen.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else? Alright.
Sue Rodman, a resident of Placerville, and I saw on the news tonight where some of the city police cars in Sacramento have no, no armoury, or no armouring on their, on the doors of their police cars, so, and they teach the officers to use those cars as a shield, and I thought, well, a shield doesn't do you any good if the bullets go through it, and they've had officers wounded because of that, so I had concerns, and I asked our chief, and he said, not a problem here, our cars are fully armored, so I was very happy to hear that, so, I thought I would share good news.
Boy, you learn something new every time.
You know, when we buy these things, we should pay more attention, I guess, but I guess there's...
It's a lineup.
It's a lineup.
Mr. Mayor, if I may...
Yes, you may.
The armor now is stock on the new Ford SUVs, like the one you approved a couple months back, but it looks like they were buying it before they were stock on the equipment, so, I appreciate that, and I know the officers appreciate it, it does make it safer.
Well, good, well, good, that's what we want. It's a dangerous job, it should be as safe as possible, so, excellent.
Thanks.
Yeah.
That was nice of Sue to be concerned.
Well, I know.
It's a huge issue.
It is. I went by Monday morning, I had to leave town very early because I had to go to Susanville.
Lovely drive.
Yeah, most of it, anyway, and I went by the monument, and it was all lit up, and I took a blurry picture, it was awful, but it looked fantastic, it was really cool, you know, and it was like, it was still dark, obviously, so, yeah, it was really good.
Everybody has to go look at it when it's dark, because it's just so impressive.
I agree with you 100 percent, okay. Okay, let's see, the consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. Do we have any questions or polls from the consent calendar? Nope, nope, nope.
No, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve when you're ready.
We have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Would the public like to comment on the consent calendar? Okay.
To public.
Well, you know, it's still plural, so there's "to public", okay, "the public", okay, so we have it back here, please, call the roll.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Obviously, no items were pulled from the consent calendar, there are no ordinances and no public hearings. We have some discussion slash action items, so, 12.1, adopt a resolution approving the, an amendment to the contract with Eldorado Disposal amending the standard for answering phone calls. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and also want to note that Sue Van Linder's here to answer your questions also. I'll give a quick report on this.
She's our public.
There you go.
One of our public.
Public to the right.
It's Rodman is out there.
I didn't, I said we've got two public.
So, the agreement with Eldorado Disposal has provisions for some standards that they are required to meet in their contract, and they review those with us each year and let us know how they've complied with those, and they do a very good job. The last two years, they have not been able to meet the phone standard, which requires them to answer a call within 75 seconds currently. Then, reviewing the reasons for that, they've, they've made several changes, they've added two people, three people, three people, sorry, Sue will correct me on that. They've added three people, in addition, a lot of their programs have changed, they've added additional programs, the people called to find out what those programs are, that requires additional time in, in answering those calls and answering the questions. So, they have submitted a request that you will see attached to your report tonight, to change that standard from 75 seconds to 180 seconds, or three minutes. That request is quite, quite a big jump, as you can see, from 75 seconds to 180 seconds. They, I did request, and they submitted a chart showing what average call times are for other agencies. I know that Sue has also mentioned to me that they are working on, looking at a new phone pro, phone system that will allow them to do callbacks of calls when they come in, rather than have people wait on the line, is my understanding.
Boy, I think that's a great idea.
So, there are things that they are doing, I want to note also that there is a provision for a penalty for this, if they do not meet that standard, and they have not met that the last two years, and their automatic rate increase that is included in their contract has... And their automatic rate increase that is included in their contract has been reduced by 20% the last two years. And so that is one of the big reasons, I guess, that they are, they want, they want to try and amend this, so that they can reach that. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor. That's the basics of this amendment. And I'm sure that Sue will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Given, given the history we have with this, or this entity, under normal circumstances, I would think it would be someone trying to get out from underneath something. But in this case, the, the rest of the service has been so good to the city, and our relationship with them has been so good. I personally don't see this as a problem. And we should just keep an eye on it and see how things go, but I'm sure we'll get that feedback. And are there any questions for?
I don't have any questions, but honestly, and I, Cleve, you just said that we review this every, I, I don't ever remember going into this much depth about it, and maybe because it wasn't, but I had no idea. I mean, this is just a real shocker to me that, you know.
Each year, they review the standards, because they talk about, you know, how many, how many misservices when we, when we go through.
I guess that part, but this telephone thing, it just really was, I didn't, and you know, when I think of the, the number of, I'm gonna say hours that I spend on the phone, this is nothing. Seconds, it's like, whoa. So, anyway, I, I'm just.
Well, it could go up now, though.
Well, that's all right, but it's not, still not that long. I was on the half an hour this morning with Sacramento Bee, so.
Me too.
Can I say? She's wanting this.
Tricia has a question, hold on. Well, you can stand there, hold on. Tricia.
I don't have a question, I just wanted to like, talk about what Patty was saying. It does not seem that long. I mean, when you're on the phone for an hour. So the cost of the, so to me, when I get, oh, leave your, you know, whatever, and we'll call you back, we'll hold your place in line, sometimes it's like, nah, I'll just hang on, or whatever. And if it's three minutes, I'd be like, why would I, it's gonna take me three minutes to go through the thing to get my call returned to me. So, so how does that work? Like, what, what's the cost of that system? And like, what, is it really worth it?
So Sue Vandlinder, Eldorado Disposal. Good evening, council members. So to answer your question, it is worth it, because there are folks, during, for example, when we bill, somebody could be on hold longer than three minutes. That's the average. So what we're trying to do is, when we have a high call volume, give folks the opportunity to bail out. And so we give them opportunities to reach us via email, they're able to leave voicemail. We want them to know that they can receive a call back. And so it is, it's, the investment is worth it. We also will be adding two additional customer service representatives this year. So we added three last year, we're adding another two this year, because our call volume has increased pretty dramatically. In addition to the call volume increasing, I think the bigger issue is just that we've, we've gone from an average call time of about three minutes to an average call time of about five minutes, in order to be able to educate people about all of our services. And that's really the basis for the request. 75 seconds was a standard that was set probably 20 years ago. And, you know, we basically just picked up garbage then, and that's all we did. And so, you know, when you think about the service offerings that we have now, you know, they're much more, they're much more detailed, and, and folks have a lot of questions. So we want to be able to take the time with each customer and not rush them off the phone. And this gives us an opportunity to do that.
Well, thank you. You go ahead. I had one question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go right ahead.
Sue, good evening. Good, nice to see you.
Good evening, nice to see you.
Is your call center here in Eldorado County?
Yes, it's actually in, in, just off of, you know, off of Throwaway, off of Highway 49.
So it's right there at the big facility?
Yes.
You're not off, offshore, in some phone bank system?
We are not offshore.
Yeah.
And everybody that works there is local.
That is wonderful.
So, they know your street, they probably know your kids. So, yeah, all local.
I appreciate that, because there are a lot of organizations.
They're not offshore like Auburn?
No, they're not, you know, Philippines and places like that.
Oh, that would be way far.
Yes.
I had, I had one, if, if there are no other questions.
I don't have a question, I just wanted to tell her that I had an incident that I had to deal with, and I had to, it was, it was about my commercial property and my garbage problems.
Okay.
And they, I tell you, you, they, the folks down there couldn't have been better. I mean, their response, and then they got, they had to, it was a situation where they had to look into records, and they called me back, and they were, it was just, it was a really great experience, and I, I think that's what goes on. And I had one other question. You're saying because you have added so many services, and do you think maybe then this will start to taper off after?
I would love that, Patty, because then my folks would have an opportunity to do other things. But I just can't guarantee it, you know, we just.
No, I know, I was just curious though to that, you know, because like I say, all of this, you've presented so many new programs recently.
We have, we have. But, you know, I see that as kind of an ongoing process. As the state, you know, works very hard to reach a 75% diversion goal, I see more programs coming.
Yeah, that's true.
So, you know, with food waste, organics, that kind of thing, especially for commercial businesses, I think the phone calls are just gonna probably stay where they are. And we take over 700 calls a day.
Wow.
Oh, wow. Right there in Eldorado.
I'm sorry, I interrupted Mark.
That's okay, I'm used to it. Sue, it's really, I got a kick out of this. I saw this request on the agenda, and I saw that you were gonna add some personnel, and I thought, well, that's really great. And I thought, well, this'll give me an opportunity to share an experience I had just recently going over to the Murph on a Thursday at 2:00.
Okay.
And I thought, okay, most of the contractors should have their act figured out, and I won't sit in the line too long. And well, they did, and there were seven of us, and there was one extremely efficient clerk in the little, in the little house.
Wow.
The only problem was, she had a huge number of trucks that all had to be scaled in, and they all had to be scaled out. So she would take care of one residential customer, weigh a truck in, run out with a weight slip, give another truck. I mean, we're talking semis, roll-off boxes, long haulers, everybody, guy with a load of pipe.
Yeah.
And we're all lined up. It took me 22 minutes to get up to the window to pay my $6.
Mm-hmm.
And I, finally, just as I got up, three people come running out, and started going through the line. I thought, whoa, this is not good. Because people are, you sit in line for 22 minutes, people are just not gonna come the next time, and then we're gonna have people dumping garbage on private property and all that sort of stuff, because they, they're going to be discouraged. So is there any help that we could get to cut those lines down?
So, actually, it's great that you brought that up. So with the increase in the call volume, and with our economy coming back, which is wonderful, we have seen a tremendous increase at the material recovery facility. So we've added two additional staff there. Jason should be finished with his training, so that we, you know, so we, we've promoted some people within, which is great, and then we've added a couple of new staff members. We're also working on a handheld device currently.
Ah.
So that we can go out, kind of like your Apple machine.
Yep.
We can go out and, and actually create tickets while customers are in line, because I've seen the line out to Bradley again. And if you were there on a day when there was only one scale house attendant, either somebody was at lunch or on break, or we had somebody ill. So the other thing we've done is, we've cross-trained about five of our staff to be able to do any of three jobs at the, at the site, so that, because that's where the bottleneck happens, is at the scale house.
The person that you had there, she was magnificent. She's doing a great job.
They're great.
Just juggling, and these big trucks, and all these truck drivers, and then of course, there's just, meet a few contractors, and I said, boy, you need to get some help. And she said, thank you.
Yeah. Well, we're also.
I'm glad you're on it.
Well, we're also putting in a, and we've been waiting for the rebuild to do this, but we're also putting in a, kind of an automated feature for our trucks. So we've got the tear weights, so they can just come in, scale in, and they don't have to talk to anyone. And I think that's gonna help as well. So we've, we've got a few things in the works, and hopefully you'll see that line move more quickly.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay, go.
Hi Sue, always good to see you.
Nice to see you too.
I just wanted to echo the mayor's comments that if this was any other company, we might, you know, take a harder look at this, but we so appreciate your, your diligence in serving our community efficiently and effectively, and all the ways that you support our community. That's, that's incredibly evident in the way you do business.
Thank you.
So really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I also think it's, it's, you know, always important for us to keep in mind that because this is a mandatory service, that I know we're all on the same wavelength, that it's important that, because our customers don't have a choice, that they are, they receive the very best service possible, and, and all of your efforts are certainly doing that while you have a much bigger yoke on your shoulder in dealing with the state regulations. So that's a Herculean battle that you're fighting too, on behalf of our customers.
Thank you.
So thank you for that.
Thank you, and I'll pass that on to my people, because I get to work with some excellent people, so.
And speaking of mandatory, I did have a question, of mandatory service. I had a question from a community member, who is selling their house and they are now gone. And she says, why do I have to pay for garbage service when no one lives in the house? So how do I answer her, Sue?
So, okay, thanks.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you, Cleve.
Just, just have her call my office. We have an exemption, that, one of the exemptions is for the house's vacant, and we can fill that out, and then we forward it to.
She will be so happy.
That's correct.
So thank you so much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thanks for coming, Sue.
Thank you.
We got all kinds of great information. Thank you, Sue. You're running a great organization. We appreciate your service.
Thank you very much.
You know, this meeting is going great.
I appreciate your support.
I gotta say, this meeting is going really well. Okay, do we have any other questions or comments? Any comments? Oh, come on.
From the other public.
The other part of the room.
We have two Sues.
Your only consistent public, right? Sue Rodman, resident and customer of Eldorado Disposal, and I really do appreciate their service. It has been great over the years. And I love my little pink garbage can. And I think it's wonderful that they come and do the community cleanup twice a year for us, too. I think that's a huge service that I have never seen anywhere else. And it's, I think it helps a lot with preventing dumping of all kinds of stuff all around, and that's great. So I'd like to say thank you to them.
Well, you just did. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so let's, uh.
With that, I will move approval of this item.
Second.
All right, we're amending a contract.
Yes, we are.
Does this require a roll call? Let's do a roll call, though. Roll call?
Money.
Is it money? It's kinda money.
It's kinda money.
It's not?
Oh, let's just, because if you wanna do it.
Oh, no, he's just humoring me. This is.
It's his birthday, he can do that.
I've got like two meetings left, and I just, I feel like a failure.
Oh, come on, let's have a roll call.
Anyway, let's do a roll call anyway. Why not? Okay.
Councilmember Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Mayor Clarici.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
Now, there's numbers in this one. There's actually dollar signs and numbers. Yeah, okay. Thank you very much, Sue.
Thank you.
And Sue.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody. Okay. Sue squared. Okay. Uh, let's see, this is adopt a resolution? I'll, I'll read the first part. Ratifying agreements with Telstar Instruments, Inc., for replacement of the existing stream flow and temperature gauge, and temperature gauge, another one, for a total of $19,302. And then we're ratifying agreement with Domincelli, authorizing the Director of Development Services to execute the same, and we're approving a budget appropriation in the amount of $2,641 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund and contingency for unforeseen expenditures for the said project. Mr. Rivas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The winter storms that occurred back in January and February of this year brought high volume and velocity water flows down Hangtown Creek, which is the receiving water for the Hangtown Creek Water Reclamation Facility's effluent. The existing stream flow gauges and temperature gauge known as RSW-1 and RSW-2, and the containment systems were heavily damaged during the high stream flows, which brought heavy rock, gravel, and debris that battered these instruments, rendering them basically useless. Accurate measurements of stream flow and temperature are required for monitoring purposes for compliance with our National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, the NPDES permit for the Wharf. The RSW-1 is located above the point of effluent discharge into the creek, which contains a temperature gauge and a pressure switch, switch for measuring stream flow. The RSW-2 is located below the point of effluent discharge into the creek, which contains only a temperature gauge for monitoring the temperature of the water. In addition, the profile of the creek was substantially altered, requiring new measurements to be taken to allow for the calibration of the new gauges. This effort would include both flow velocities and cross-section measurements. Telstar Instruments submitted proposals that meet the city requirements to replace the damaged stream flow gauge and temperature gauges, and Dominic Kelly and Associates submitted a proposal to provide for the stream measurements and profiling of Hangtown Creek to allow for the calibration of the in-stream gauges once installed. The capital improvement project to replace the instruments and conduct the stream profiling and calibration effort was approved in your fiscal year 2017-18 budget. Following the budget approval, staff then requested Telstar to design a means of removing the instruments, and this is for RSW-1, from the creek during any future high-flow water situations to prevent damage to the newly installed equipment. The work will include a hinge in the conduit to allow for a manual withdrawal of the instruments from the creek when necessary. This modification to the original request added about $2,600 to the original cost estimate for the new lump sum of now $11,567. The Hangtown Creek Flow and Temperature Gauge Replacement and Calibrations Capital Improvement Project was approved for a total of $25,862, and staff is requesting that the original proposal that will includes the hinge, adding the, the $2,600 for a new total of $2,600, $2,800, 503. Staff is recommending the additional appropriation of the $2,600 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund for unforeseen expenditures, which currently has an unencumbered fund balance of $36,000 some odd dollars. And these improvements are eligible for reimbursement through FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, leaving the city with a two, with a six and a quarter percent obligation, or a city share of approximately $1,600. The federal reimbursement may take up to one year to process, so staff is moving forward with replacing these instruments now to remain in compliance with our permit. So with that, staff is recommending that the council adopt a resolution ratifying the agreements with Telstar Instruments for the replacement of the existing stream flow and temperature gauge, and temperature gauge for RSW-2 for a total of $19,000. Ratifying agreement with Dominic Kelly and Associates for stream measurements for use and calibration of the replacement gauges in an amount of $6,700. Authorize the Director of Development Services or designate to execute the same, and then approve a budget appropriation in the amount of $2,600 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund for unforeseen expenditures for said project. That concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say that I just, I was really happy to read that part about staff requesting about that, the hinge on the con, to, I mean, what a, you know, for, what, twenty-six hundred dollars? That certainly is a cost-saving item than having that, you know, damaged. I just think it's a great, whoever thought of it, whoever staff was that thought of it, I congratulate them. I think that's a great idea.
Well, thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Pierre. Following Patty's comment, quick question on that. If we were able to remove the gauges during the storms, which makes a lot of sense to protect our investment in the assets that the city holds, is there a period of time that our stream can be without gauges without being in violation of our permit?
Well, the state is, the state is well aware that our gauges were damaged, so they're, as long as we're showing due diligence in moving forward to come into compliance, they're not issuing a notice of violation or anything regarding our permit. So they're well, we keep them well informed of our progress.
Okay, great. So then this next winter, we get these new gauges in place. If we have heavy storms, we take the gauges out of the creek. How long can they be out of the creek without us being in violation? I guess that's my question.
Um, we would report to them as soon as we pull the gauges, probably during the time that the floodwaters are moving debris down the creek.
Right.
Right.
So until such time as we know that the flows and the velocities of the water is such that we're not having the boulders, the rock, and the gravel traveling down the creek, we would then put the instruments right back into the creek.
And so the state has provision for us to do that?
Uh, there's nothing in our permit that says that, but they're aware that we're, we're going to be able to withdraw it because the way it is, the way it's currently, the existing conditions meant that the, that the instruments were rendered useless. And so we've been without instrumentation for, for, for months. And so hopefully this time we would only be without instrumentation for maybe a week.
Yeah. That makes a lot of sense.
Unless the floodwaters recede.
It's, it seems to me, though, that this is a bigger issue in the summer than in the winter, because it seems to me like you'd be doing temperature things, because we have to like cool the water.
Correct.
So I would think that, that the downstream probes would be the downhill probes from the facility. Would, if you were pulling them out in the summer, I could see the state maybe, but in the winter, I mean, the water's flowing, it's just, yeah, I mean, I don't know. I mean, now I am being, guessing there, but I would think that it's, it's a bigger issue in the summer than in the winter. But...
I think that's a good guess.
That's probably why they don't have anything in there, because it doesn't need to be in in the winter. I'm just speculating.
Recall, it's, it's both, it's both temperature and flow. It's not just temperature.
Right. Well, but even the flow, the flow issues would be more of an issue in the summer, because the flows go down real low potentially, and then you're putting water back into the stream. So it would seem to me the flow and temperature would be an issue in the summer more than the winter. But who knows? Okay, any other questions, comments? Questions, comments? Okay, oh?
I had two questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Rivas, for the report. Appreciate your following up on this. I know it's important to get this put back in. Do we have an estimate of when they could complete this work if it's approved this evening?
Uh, they're, they're, the part, the, the equipment is currently on order, and so I think they're preparing. As soon as they get the equipment, they'll install it. And Dominic Kelly and Associates is, is doing the stream flow. They're waiting for, actually, it's good that it's raining. They need a little bit greater flow to do some of the stream profiling. So hopefully after this next, I guess, the next couple of days, we're looking at seeing some more significant rainfall. So hopefully they'll take that opportunity to complete the profiling, and then they'll have that data. And once the, the equipment's in, then they can install it, and we'll be in, we'll be in the game.
Okay. And one other question. This location of the hinge, is it going to be safe from high flow? Is it in, is it in a position in the stream bed or the bank to where it won't be at jeopardy?
I think they'll be able to withdraw the whole, the whole line. But you know, that, that's a good question. I don't know that level of detail.
Because I could see where that, if you pick a spot, you're still subject to so many year flow.
I think the whole thing can be withdrawn from the, from the creek, is my understanding. But I can surely get back to you individually on that.
I just wonder, because we're, you know, it's twenty-six hundred dollars. And if we could just, if we could just have known to gone and take the other, taken them out in January of this year, would, would the facility still have been there to hook up? You say we had done that. I wonder if that, you know, or did the flows re-figure everything such that the connection points were gone? No. Mother Nature will do. So I'm just making sure we're not spending twenty-six hundred that's going to wind up in Folsom.
Oh, no, I understand.
Kind of like these parts of these four.
And Folsom never did bring our parts back, did they?
And they never brought them back.
No, no.
No, the twenty-six hundred dollars is to allow the instrument to be, actually, it's just RS-1, not RS-2. So the downstream temperature gauge would remain in the creek.
Subject to?
Subject to whatever. But I think it's in a location where its damage is much less probable than, than the other one. And the other one has the expensive, you know, pressure switch for the, for the velocity of the water. And that's what we want to make sure we can yank out of there when it looks like we're going to hit into some high water.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sue, do you have any comments or questions?
Sue Rodman, resident, ratepayer. And I think this is an extremely good idea. It's one I have not seen done before, to make it so that you can actually yank those gauges. Because I have been involved in stream measurements before in Woodford Forest Service, and doing the stream profile, and the flow, and the temperature kind of all go together. And the instrumentation is very expensive. And if you can yank it out of harms way, it really will help you a lot. Avoids having to go back to FEMA again next year and say, "Cousin, we got wiped out again." So, good, good plan.
Okay. Thank you, Sue. Okay.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Would you please call the roll?
Nice. Councilmember Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Mayor Clarici.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
All right. Very good. Okay. Let's see here. Twelve point three. Ah, we're on the clubhouse turn here. Adopt a resolution adopting legislative policy and procedures for the City of Plasville. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At the city council meeting on September 12th, Councilmember Borelli made a request that we develop a policy to allow the city manager to respond to legislative issues which come to the city and may need a timely response prior to the city council meeting. The item before you tonight is a draft legislative policy meant to meet that request. It's fairly detailed, but I will say that I reviewed a lot of others from other cities that are much more detailed than the one that, that I did.
Did you do this, the whole thing?
Well, I, yes and no. I...
I was impressed.
I used it from other, from other agents.
I was, I was impressed.
I looked at several and found one that I thought was close to what we may want to look at and, and use that to put together. So...
Good job.
And then I, I took that also, and I distributed it to all of our department heads and have them add their input, changes, et cetera. And they gave some good requests, some good changes to that. So what this would do is, if you adopt the legislative policy, it would allow us, we would still continue to do things the way we are now. If there is time to bring it to a council meeting, we would still bring it to a council meeting. However, if it does come at a time when a, a bill is going to be acted on at the state prior to us meeting, and there are request, and there is a request to, for us to respond, and it fits within that legislative policy, I would then be authorized to prepare the letter for the mayor's signature to then send to the state. So I want to emphasize, this is just a draft policy. Many of these I, I changed slightly, but some of these I took straight from the, from one that I pulled out from another city. And so we, we are open, both myself and staff, to council's direction on this. If there are things that we need to change, if you need more time to review and go back and look at those, I'm also open to that. And I did also include with this a summary of the League of California Cities policy that goes into much more detail regarding these, many of these items, and allows you to, give you some more ideas of other policies or changes that you might need to look at. So with that, I will give it back to you to answer any questions and go from there.
I had a, I, I think this is a really important issue, and I'm wondering, you said, I'm wondering if we could have like a, a council, like a meeting to go over this with all of us present, because, yeah, well, tonight, you want to do the whole thing? No, but I just think that this is really important. And, you know, I just thought maybe that having all of us, kind of, if you want to do it, that's fine, but it's pretty lengthy.
No, no, that's okay. No, we, we were, we were talking about, we were just talking about that. And...
What?
About what you said.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the reason I propose this?
Yes.
Is that so many, we, you know, Charles, what's Charles' last name?
Anderson.
Anderson, from League of Cities. You know, he sends us these frantic, you know, that the legislature's meeting, and, and could we, you know, all send? And I, I just think that it loses something when five people send a letter and they all say the same thing. I mean, it just sounds so, you know, and so I, I questioned about having us, just having one letter and then really, you know, stating things maybe somebody else is not saying. And I talked to Charles at one of the league, and he, he suggested that, that this is what we do. So that's when I brought it to Cleve, so.
Very good.
May I?
Bye-bye on these.
I agree with Patty. I just had a couple of questions. So sometimes there are things that are a little bit too important, like, that comes to mind, like the sanctuary cities and the gas tags. I don't know if like, how would that, if we went with this, does staff just make the decision without council approval, or?
Well...
What's the timeframe, or?
It depends on...
Because I know she was talking about the, "This is so important." And, yeah, it's...
We have to meet a deadline.
Yeah, exactly. I understand that. But time, from time to time, we get things that I think that we should make a decision as a whole. And even if one of us has an opinion and maybe four or three don't agree, or we disagree, whatever, we should be able to express our opinion on the issue?
My opinion is that it would have to clearly meet the description of this policy that is here before I would act on it. If it does not, if there was any question in my mind, I would not move it forward, that it would have to come back to council.
And since we all get those emails, and we know kind of, we could always contact you, you know, with a yea or nay.
So would that be like a halt on it, even if it's, so I mean, my opinion is that the city doesn't have to take a position on everything every single time?
Sure. Agreed.
So, um, so do, oh, go ahead.
I think you were bringing up a really important point, Tricia. And I, so I'd like to piggyback on that, because, yeah, really good comments, really good comments. And, Cleve, I truly appreciate all of the, the work that's gone in with you and all of our department heads. It's a lot of work, even though it's, you know, following other, what other cities do. It represents a lot of work. And Patty, I sure appreciate the intent of this, because I, I think it is so important for our voice to be heard, you know. Shame on us, because we often don't speak up on legislative matters, and then, you know, we get what we get, which is often not in our favor.
But I think, I think we have started participating more.
We have, yes.
And I, Charles appreciates it, I know that.
Yes, we have. The challenge that I had with this, though, is that I think the intent of this idea, which I fully support, is this action will allow our city manager the flexibility in responding quickly to matters that seek to limit local control. And I think that is on all of our radars as what is critically important. I think we're always concerned with limiting local control. And personally, I think that's where we ought to leave it with this policy. I think the, as the legislative policy is written right now, I think we need to be really careful of, of a blanket public policy that's disguised as local protection, because there's a lot of policies in here that are really partisan issues. And for us to just give a blanket policy that when anything comes before, that's in this, this is a very broad legislative policy.
Yes, it is.
That we have, that we don't have enough checks and balances perhaps to give a unified voice from the city. For example, item 1A, let me just, let me just read that. Like, like Tricia said, there's a lot of perhaps controversial items.
What page?
I'm sorry, no. 1A?
Page 1A?
Ah, ah, sorry. Under the Public Safety, sorry, chief here. 1A is to support legislation to protect the public from the dangerous and improper use of weapons and enact necessary regulations to limit and control their use. That is a very nebulous statement, because what one person considers a dangerous and improper use of weapons might not be someone else's thought about that. There's also a lot of policies in here that talk about, that we would support anything that raises revenue for our city. Well, we may or may not. It depends on, you know, I don't think we would give blanket support for any tax increase. It would have to be carefully thought out. And so my suggestion on this is that we perhaps, let's see, how do I write this down? With, I, I, for your consideration, to my fellow council members, that maybe we redirect staff to bring back another legislative policy, which number one, grants authority to the city manager with the support of the mayor and vice mayor, which would then give a little check and balance to it. And two, to take a position or of support or opposition on legislative matters involving local control, and leave it at that. So any matter that involves local control, then the mayor and the vice mayor and the city manager can decide, if there's not time to come back for another council meeting, to decide to take a position either support or opposition in accordance with the, with the League of California Cities. But as far as the rest of these issues on, you know, tax increases and any other more controversial items, I think it, that would need to come before the, the city council in order for us to have a unified voice, public voice.
Well, the way I kind of read, read this is that this is just kind of a blanket, but it would depend on what they were proposing. And those, the issues are huge and really involve a lot of more, you know, and this is just kind of...
It does, but this resolution talks about the fact that we will make a, a, take a stand based on this policy, which is very, very, very broad. And like Tricia points out, can be controversial and may or may not reflect the will of our community.
Right. And that's where I think, you know, like Cleve was saying, too, that he would, I mean, we could either submit, you know, when we get this, when this comes before us, we can call him or tell the mayor.
But the public wouldn't have a chance to, to, you know, because large issues come up at the state. And if it's something controversial, this is pretty much a blanket policy that the city manager, and not, not that I don't trust Cleve, I do. But we need to make sure that on anything controversial, the public has a, a right to weigh in on how the city is going to respond as far as a official voice. That's just my thought.
That's my thought, too.
Well, I, I'm not sure that any, any time that we have backed the city on any, that we've brought this, except it has appeared on our agenda. And, but I don't know that anybody's ever weighed in and said, "No, I don't think you should do that." You know, not that it won't come up sometime, but...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's interesting that cities have gone to tremendous detail on this, because I agree with my colleagues that this just gets into an awful lot of, "Well, let's spend everybody else's money on a number," just a whole bunch of these. Yeah, they're, they're good ideas, but at the end of the day, for example, to support building more parks, theaters, libraries, and, well, that's a great cause, but it, somebody's got to pay for it. And if so, we would be saying, you know, "We're in favor of imposing a tax to raise more money to, you know, build a big, bigger library." Wonderful, noble cause, but maybe not what our community wants us as enough five electeds to be out there doing. I was going to ask Cleve if it, if it sounds like there's a good chance that we're going to work on this, if he could give us an example of the last two or three years, what those issues have been that have had this, and I understand what Patty's saying. These, these emails come at the eleventh hour and they need support. A bill has risen that is going to cause harm.
Well, there's a big issue tomorrow.
But if Cleve could give us an idea of what the last couple, three years, what have those really been? I mean, the one that sticks in my mind most recently is the, the ability to put cell tower equipment everywhere.
Right.
And bombard people with more radio communication, but...
And not pay for it.
And not pay for it necessarily. And some of those are really ugly. They would have... So anyway, that's the, that one was... So, Mr. Morris?
Hold on, boy. Hold on. I think you either, it's one of these weird things. You're trying to sort of, yeah, you're trying to predict the fu, predict the future and say, "Well, I will give you some guidelines about what might happen." And it's kind of like, you know, art, I'll know it when I see it, you know, and that sort of thing. I think that if we were to do something like Wendy suggested, then we probably just shouldn't do anything. Because the reality is, is that I can take probably some things that are in this document and add it to the idea of, what was it, local control?
Yeah.
And you could couple them up with anything, and then all of a sudden, it's not about local control. It could be about something else that we want to talk about. So it's either kind of like we try to come up with something that fits the bill. I'm trying to, yeah, the, the cell tower one was the, the, well, you know, I mean, there's a lot of things out there. There's this secondary dwelling unit thing that just kind of came down the pike, which is sort of one of those things that the state decided to do. And, you know, you're sitting there going, "Well, how does that fit into the town I, I know that we govern and that people live in? And is it a good thing? Is it a bad thing?" The cell tower thing was not that nobody wants to not have like, you know, G5 cell coverage and those sorts of things. It was literally like, you know, "We can handle this at the local level. We know how to do permits. We can permit processes. Don't need the state of California telling us." Sanctuary city status was one of those, even though people had a wide variety of views on the subject itself. You know, we don't need the state of California telling us that we should be a sanctuary city, or not. You know, they, they could have, I mean, there were states in the union where they went the opposite directions. You can't become a sanctuary city. And I think that's every bit is wrong when you start to do that. But I'm not so sure that if we, if we find problems in here, there may not be a way to write words down that... to write words down that will actually give the city manager enough pause, except to say, and this would be a decision of the city council, and I'm curious, because I have a question about the whole thing, is would we give the mayor, vice mayor, and the, and the city manager some latitude to sort of look at a subject and say, yeah, we think that's a, it's a critical thing, it's timely, we've got to get it done, and go do it? Rather than try to come up with a bunch of rules as to why? Because we'll have.
Well, that's kind of, and I didn't expect something this huge. I mean, I just wanted to, this is not what I asked.
Be careful what you wish.
Be careful what you asked for. But, but really and truly, it's just what you, what you were just saying, though, it's the, the league asks for our backing on certain things. And maybe if we don't want to give them our back, we don't have to. And that would be a decision that the city manager could decide, could decide. And I, I'm not too sure we need to have all this. It was just about that particular, you know, with responding to support or non-support. And we, we, you know, we don't have to do either one, but it was just giving, you know, that.
You, we had a vague notion that there was something we ought to be doing and we tried to come up with a legislative sort of way of doing it.
Well, and I, yeah, but this, I, I just wanted to say, yes, give our city manager permission to do this if we can't all.
I mean, it might be, it kind of might actually come down to that, is to say, you know, at the discretion of the city manager. And then coming back to the council and talking about it at some point. I mean, the reality is, is most of the things that we get when we get those alerts are not.
It's something that's pertaining to our town.
It's pretty specific, it's pretty specific.
Exactly, that we would be affected.
You go, oh, yeah, that's really not something, I want the state of California deciding for Placerville.
Although what kind of raised my, my thought on this was, was reading this summary of existing policies from the League of California Cities.
Oh, yeah.
And there were things in here, as I went through it, saying, hmm, I don't know if we would blanket, you know, support.
No.
And, and that caused me to rethink, maybe we need to either keep it simple and just narrow it down to local control with the mayor, vice mayor, city manager having some checks and balances in there.
Right.
Or like you, John, said, you know, perhaps not do it, but because there's some things in here that I don't think we would support.
And that was my thought, is that, you know, we're not going to, you know, vote for everyone, that he comes and asks for our, you know.
Yeah, but if he's gone rogue, he's already done the damage.
Just because it's the.
And we're just left here to clean up after him. I know, but Cleve wanted, he was leaning into the microphone and then I cut him off.
No, I don't, I don't think, I, I agree with all the comments. I mean, I, there are some, some tough issues out there and very likely, you know, there will be more that will come up that, that could, and there could be a split on the council and they could fall somewhat within these general statements, so I fully understand that.
You have a comment? Oh, okay, well, you look like you were poised.
She does have a poised look.
I'm enjoying the conversation.
Very good. You know, maybe we, maybe, maybe we should do this, rather than, rather than try to prescribe something in this time, why don't we run a little real-time experiment? And as things come from, you know, the league and Charles and other folks, because we get, we get things, but mostly from Charles, it mostly comes from the League of California Cities. We, if we get one that kind of, you know, gets our spidey senses tingling, we go, that's one right there. And we sort of collect them together and then we use that to, if we decide there's enough of them. And, you know, the other thing too is, we may be responding to a problem that only happens once in a blue moon, but it just seems like when it happens, it's so big a deal and then we want to do something about it. As Jerry Brown said, not every problem requires a legislative response. So why don't we do, I would suggest that. Why don't we kind of keep a tally of these things? We all get them, we get the league things and, and kind of like feel like, there's one, I wish we could respond to that, but we're not going to have a meeting for three weeks.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah. And then we figure out a way to respond to it anyway, but I'm just saying, at least we could sort of collect them.
But as, okay, so I'm going to bring this up too. So when we're getting these emails and asking for our support, if three of us want to support something, it makes, and we're signing it as an, you know, from the Placerville City Council, it makes it look like we are supporting it. And maybe there's two on the council don't want to support it, so I.
But as a body, we would be supporting it because if there are three.
Well, not necessarily.
Our lawyers, our lawyers.
Yeah, well, I mean, after the meeting, we take a vote.
Yeah. If we took a vote, that's a different thing, but, but.
If you were to look in your council member handbook, if you're writing a, a letter individually, you were to state that you were acting on your own, not as like the council.
So if the mayor and vice mayor met and said, let's do this, that's only, that's not a meeting, that's not as, as a body.
No.
And they could not answer as a city council, right, as an official position from the city.
Right.
No, and that's what they always ask.
Yeah.
Unless you were to delegate that authority.
Right.
To the mayor, vice mayor, and city manager, then they could do it officially. But without that delegation of authority, it'd have to be an individual.
I have a question, if three council members make a statement about something but don't speak as the city council, are they violating the Brown Act?
Like in public?
Unless they acted in, I mean, if it just comes out individually.
No, okay.
Then they wouldn't be, but if they acted.
If they affixed their name to the same letter, would that be a problem?
Depends how the letter reads.
Okay, thank you.
Because if the letter reads that it's on behalf of the city council, that's, then they would be.
That would be a problem.
If it recites that they're acting individually in their capacity, not as members of the city council, et cetera, then it probably would not be.
And I think it's, oh, sorry.
But, but again, even in that situation, you remember your ethics training, talked about avoiding that, even that perception. I wouldn't recommend three council members.
It's not something I would recommend.
And that's what he usually asks.
Well, actually, let, let me clarify. We would not know that each other are supporting or opposing members. We all get emails from Charles. We respond on our own with a letter or not. I mean, I, I know I write letters, I talk to our legislators. I have no idea what the four of you were doing. I think that's really important to, to, to keep in mind. And so we wouldn't know if we were responding to Charles' requests. And it would certainly not be, and we don't put on city letterhead. I, I have my own, you know, name on top and, and so it's not an official voice. And so we would not be representing the city of Placerville unless it's a, a council meeting in this current policy.
If it came to a council meeting and it came to the public and a vote, and we could each individually go on record, either opposing or supporting, and then whatever we decide as.
As a majority.
As a majority, that's what we all go with, but we would be on record as individuals in the public saying, you know.
Yeah.
No gas tax, or yes, yes, whatever it might be. But it would be public record that.
And the public would have a chance to comment in the process.
And they would have a chance to comment, and they would have a chance to, oh, I like your view, or, oh, I'm going to sway your view, or, oh, I changed my view. Thank you, public. So, yes.
Good.
Speaking of which, Kirk? Are you, did, were you just driving, walking by and decided to come in? Did you come here for this specific item?
Welcome, yes.
I did enjoy listening to your discussion. These are the concerns I have. You, you really want openness and transparency in government. You are a representative body and it's important that you represent people. If you look back upon the two examples that you illustrated, one was the secondary dwelling business and then the cell phones, you brought that up at a council meeting and you got input from the public. And the public was able to ask you some questions. That's important. But I can't remember anything that happens in the legislature where you don't get plenty of lead time, months in advance. So people may send you email at the last minute because they want to push because it's coming up. But that doesn't mean that it just now occurred. It's been around kicking, brewing for quite a while. So I think there needs to be, as council member Thomas talked about, some checks in here. One of them is if it's something that's got to hap, it's going to happen within two weeks before you meet, that's a different story. But if it's not, wait until it comes up. Because you, you really want openness, you want that opportunity to have people express their views. That's just so crucial. I just can't think of any measure that comes up. And it prompts me to think of another measure. I have great respect for our city manager, I think she's exceptionally competent. And I was at the Board of Supervisors when the matter of the, the Chamber of Commerce building across the street came up and, and the city manager spoke on behalf of the chamber's position of wanting to keep it. I don't know how that happened. How did you, did you have a vote? Did you, someone decide to do that? Because it puts, it's an awkward position when the chamber also has a political arm, they endorse many of you for reelection, and they've been on record as supporting almost every measure that you've come up with in the last few years, roundabout, Clay Street, et cetera. It just, it just seemed odd. I don't know how that came up, so that's a question I have. And, and otherwise I, I hold to the same concerns that you have about putting some checks in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
I, I'm just trying, I'm trying to think of a couple of, it just have come across.
You see, now that you have to think about it, you can't.
These letters, I'm just, I'm trying to think of issues that why, you know, that he did, and, and like what Kirk said, it was something that was going to happen and we weren't going to meet for like three weeks or something like that, and he asked for our support, you know, so that's what I'm saying.
The, the timeliness issue is important, however.
And we have to post it, it has to be put in.
And Kirk is certainly, you know, having been a denizen of Washington DC, knows that the legislative process can be convoluted and things can, you know, issues can go away, they come back from the dead, they go back to dead, they come back from the dead. And so, and we're always getting those notices, like, oh, you know, SB 37 is, you know, that's a horrible thing, but it's, you know, it's in committee and the, so you could spend a lot of time bringing up subjects about things that literally will never see the light of day because they'll get to the legislature and they'll die. So one of the reasons why, and I, I mean, and I understand the concern, one of the reasons why there seems sometimes to be this sort of, you know, just haste in all of this urgency when we get these things is because literally, things have been on death's door. The, the cell tower one, the small cell one, had been in and out, and in and out of committee, and it had been dead, and then it came back to life. And then we heard, oh, no, they're not going to pass, but then it came out. And, you know, and, and you could just see the flow of money coming out of the telecommunications industry going out in Sacramento, and every time it looked like it was dead, they just pumped some more money into it and they got it back up. It is now at the legis, it's at the federal level now. Congress is now taking this thing up, believe it or not. So, so there's a little bit of that. So I, I mean, you know, we, we, we are a deliberative body, but sometimes we would be deliberating forever if we had to talk about these specific things. Sometimes it's hard to know too, exactly what's going to be controversial. I mean, it seems controversial and then all of a sudden, boom, it's there and it's like, oh, yeah. Sometimes things that start off not controversial become controversial by the legislative process. They actually, things get added to them and then all of a sudden, we'll get a notice and say, oh, they just added this horrible widget to this thing, we really got to stop it. So I agree kind of holistically with the comments. Public comment, the way we normally do business is the right way to go and we should err on that side whenever possible, and I think we do. There are just, sometimes there's these occasions, that's why I would like to do that. There was, anyway.
I wish I could remember.
Do you have any comments?
Well, I just want to respond to, to Mr. Smith and, and I guess admit my fault on that one. I, I did go to the Board of Supervisors when they were considering whether or not to renew the lease for the Chamber of Commerce building. And I stated that I felt that it was a benefit having the Chamber of Commerce in our downtown. I did not bring that to the council, so that was probably a mistake on my part. But I did feel that for anyone to say that it's not a benefit to have the Chamber of Commerce in our downtown, I, I didn't see how that could not be a benefit to us. So based on that, I made that decision and I went and made that statement.
But you did it as city manager, you didn't do it on behalf of the city council.
Correct, yeah. But, but they, no, I represent the city. And I introduced myself as the city manager when I did that, so.
Although that particular subject, I, I know, I cannot speak, we did not break the Brown Act. I did not speak with my fellows. But I knew that I had spoken with Supervisor Vera Camp about it and had told him my opinion about the whole thing. So I had weighed in on it myself. Yeah, and then you came, it was funny because you kind of came back after that meeting and said, you know, I might have said something, you know, and it's like, yeah, and I go, you know, he told me, you know, whatever, you know, I said, it's fine. Don't do it again. But it's important and we should, not to make light of it. It's important when we speak for the city and when we don't, and we need to understand it and there's a very, we should keep a very bright line in front of those things. So, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go back to something you said a little while back, and that was that we recognize these when we, when they, when we see.
Yeah.
The legislative issues that are going to, to really affect us and we're going to have to take that action. You know, all the comments are correct, that some of these things have long lead times and some of them for intentional or unintentional reasons have 11th hour actions that are requested. I think we've been doing a good job with this, the process that we've been using and it does allow the public to know that we're asking our city manager to send a letter, supporting, opposing. And I think your idea of just going, it's for some, you know, maybe the next six months or, and see what really is necessary for us to respond to and, rather than setting up something that has just a whole series of.
Yeah, well, that wasn't my intent.
Oh, we know that, Patty, we know that, Patty, no, and.
We're not blaming.
Okay, as long as I'm not going to get blamed for it.
Could that possibly be a motion to direct staff to.
Hold it.
To, to not move forward with this policy. And to review for the next six months, the activity that requires legislative communication.
Well, the legislature would have to be in session.
Okay, so let's go for the next year. I mean.
I, I hate to show my ignorance of California legislation, but when do they go back into session? They're out right now. Hmm?
For six years.
Someone who knows?
Believe they go the first part of December, Mr. Mayor, for a couple of weeks, and then they come back in January also.
So I think, I think six months would do it.
So I think six months would cover it.
I like that idea.
So let's ask, I'll ask for a, a report in July of 2018.
Yeah, because that would take you past, it would take you past the end of the legislative session.
As to how many times we maybe should have responded or needed to respond quickly to see if this is a, a challenge for us or not.
What we responded to and whether timeliness issues were involved.
Yeah.
So that would be my motion.
Okay, I'll second.
All right. We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Once again, Cleve, we appreciate all your work on this, because I know we directed you to do this and no criticism towards you whatsoever. I mean, appreciate it.
And it was good that Patty brought it up.
Yeah, it was great. Good conversations, good conversations.
Okay. Counsel reports from other agency meetings. Before I do this, I was derelict in my duties. I want to commend staff for the workshop we had on the rates, the water sewer rates. It was, I, I wrote an email to staff, but I thought that the information was good, the way they laid out the need. We needed, I, we, we, we should explore a bit more of the history of how things have happened, especially around the new, well, not now new anymore, but the most recent water sewer treatment plant and then the kind of the, the story of things since then, I think, would help. But I thought they did a great job. The, the, the department heads all did an excellent job just describing the needs, what motivated them, applying costs to them, and then of course, the revenues meeting the costs. And it's an uncomfortable subject because of course, anytime you talk about raising rates on anything, it's, it's a serious issue. But I thought we had a good foundation in the workshop, I think it was the right kind of information delivered in a very good way. So anyway, I just wanted to, I should have done it when there was more people here, but Kirk's here, so Kirk got to hear it. Okay. Any other reports? Transit?
No, we haven't had a meeting since.
Transportation Commission?
Nope.
Nope.
We didn't have, we, well, we didn't have a meeting, but Vice Chair Rinaldi and I are meeting tomorrow, Thursday, and we are reviewing the, the policy, and so we're redoing, so it's going to involve some, yeah, administrative. They're, we're reviewing and advising on major revisions of the administrative policy and procedures.
All right, we'll look forward to that.
Sounds, sounds like I'm really involved.
That sounds very, very important. What's, what's new in the exciting world of LAFCO?
Well, I'll tell you what, LAFCO does keep track of a lot of legislative activity.
That's true, they do.
If you want to know about something that's going on with land use, get ahold of Jose, because they track it weekly.
That is true.
But we will meet on December the 6th.
Okay, nothing to report from SECOC, two by two?
Nope, not till after the first year.
Okay, I do want to say, well, report on one thing, not on this list. We, at the conference at the League of California Cities volunteered Placerville to host a divisional meeting, and we will be, either in March or in May, so I suggested that May would be probably better weather, but you never know. I've talked to Jose, and it looks like we'll use the California kitchen, since they don't do dinners there.
Oh.
We can use it to have the meeting and the dinner, and then I'm hoping to like have maybe some docents from the museum do the walking tours, because they like to do sort of things in the town, and certainly downtown Placerville has a lot of cool things in it.
Sounds wonderful.
So anyway, so I just let you know that, as we get going further, we're, we have to adopt, we have to come up with a program for it. I talked to Charles, and we came up with some ideas, I think, we want to try to do things a little different with the program, get it kind of juiced up. So anyway, so, yes, go right ahead.
Kind of along those lines, Wendy and Tricia and I were at the Capital Region Local Policies Dinner Forum the other night. This is the one that's sponsored by the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, Yolo Feather, Placer Counties, and they have it at a, usually it's at Mulvaney's Restaurant in Sacramento, and it's, it's a really great networking, because there's a lot of different areas that are represented, and I thought it was, it was, there was a professor from Santa Cruz University, and his name is Chris Bonner, and he talked about environmental studies and sociology, and he's written a book, and it was a really, really, really interesting meeting, we had a lot of good conversation, and we have renamed affordable to attainable.
Housing, on housing.
On housing, the housing issue. There was, there was a man there that, from his community, and he said he's renamed it. We thought that was great, because he said affordable kind of gives that, you know, he said it's attainable housing, not affordable housing. Anyway, it was a great dinner.
Well, very good, although isn't all attainable housing attainable if you have enough money?
Well...
You mean, if you have a lot of money, you can attain a $2 million house.
That isn't the way he was presenting.
I know, probably not. He would not have liked it. Anyway, okay, requests for future agenda items, do we have any?
I do, Mr. Mayor, yes. You mentioned it earlier, and so after the first of the year, I propose that we schedule a time for the city council and the city manager, we don't need to have all the department heads and, you know, take a lot of our staff time, but certainly have an open public meeting, to review the city council handbook. It's been, I think, a while since we've done, I think it was 2010, but just to be able for the council to have a conversation. I know that when I was mayor the first time, there were some things like, you know, the mayor is to write a letter to the staff at Christmas time, things like that, that weren't in the handbook, that as a new mayor would have been really helpful, and with all the industrial, or the knowledge that we have here of past previous mayors, I think that would be kind of helpful for future mayors to kind of get those, to go over it again, and get those ideas noted.
I think that's a good idea.
I love that idea, because I was looking through it, and I was like, what?
Yeah, so just a chance for us to talk about it, couldn't even be in the afternoon, but...
After the first year, you should...
Yeah, after, after the first year, after the holidays, yeah, for us to have a conversation about it.
That's a great idea, okay.
Well, it'd be coffee and...
Well, I hope so, there'll be refreshments.
And I want to thank you, Patty, and Regina, for getting us all copies of the city council handbook, really, really appreciate that.
It was nice, that was good. Okay, any other...
That was Aaron. I have to take the, I have to take it away from Regina and give it to Aaron.
Well, we'll give Aaron and Regina the credit, so, yes, you gave me one.
Okay, anybody else have a request for a future agenda item? Okay, you?
I was just going to wish the city attorney a happy birthday again.
Well, we're not done yet, but okay, happy birthday.
And happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, okay, hold on, before we do happies here. When we're, when are we scheduled to have some sort of report back on the parking district? Is there a scheduled time, is there, you know, in the moon phases, maybe around the solstice?
Dave, you want to comment on that? I know we want to do that, we want to wait till we make sure we have, it's kind of settled, and we have good numbers to really show you what we're doing. I'm thinking probably mid-year.
That would be a good time to do it, yeah.
So that would be like, when is, well, I know the middle of the year is January, but I mean, the mid-year thing is actually not in January.
The second meeting in February.
In February, okay, got it, all right.
Are we going to hold off on permanent signage till after that?
No.
No, okay, permanent signage is going through.
We're still, we're still working on that, we've got the little committee that's working.
Okay, good.
I guess I would ask the council, do you want us to bring those signs back to the full council to see?
Oh, if Wendy likes them, I'm all in.
Wendy has been assisting us, we really appreciate it, so...
Now, if you want my wife to comment, that would be okay, I'm useless.
Somebody was complaining to me about the signage the other day, and saying it doesn't make sense. What are you guys doing?
Boy, it's a tough issue, because we certainly, you know, it would be helpful even to have them up in Town Hall or someplace where the community could weigh in on them, to see if they make sense, to see, and yet designing everything by a committee is very challenging.
Even at the committee that we had, it was extremely difficult, and we brought, we did bring a couple of public people in, but it was a matter of a certain extent, educating them from the beginning, because they had not been in on the process prior to that, and so it is difficult, and the problem is, the more people you bring in, everybody brings something up, and all of a sudden, you have, you don't have a sign, you have a book that explains how, because it really, it really does get down to that level of, you know, trying to get the very basic, and have it large enough for people to read, and have it, so the signs aren't huge, and et cetera. It's, it's difficult, and we, we don't have a simple process, unfortunately, because of the way ours is designed, so...
Maybe we just need to trust the process, we have a process in place, we've been going through this a long time, and we do it forever.
You know, I don't, I don't know what's going on with the revenue side of the parking district, and I don't know what's going on with the ticket giving sign of the district. Placerville is about as busy as I have ever seen it. I was downtown like on a Wednesday last week, and you couldn't find a par, I mean, you know, normally I say, oh, yeah, there's always a parking spot. It was almost like there was no parking spot.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
I've experienced that twice this week.
You know, and every, and all days of the week, all days of the weekend, and now granted, some of it's Apple Hill in the fall, and there's just always a lot of activity, but...
This afternoon, it was crowded.
And you know what? Everyone seems to figure out the parking thing, well, except for like four people, but everyone else seems to figure out the parking thing. But we should get a report, I'm curious to see how the revenue numbers look, and how the sales tax generation in the district is looking. We have a couple of quarters that we'll have under our belt by then, so we'll be able to do some real interesting sort of like year-over-year comparisons and stuff. I think it'll be fun, okay?
We tried, we tried to go to Powell's the other night, and we ended up at Durango's, because we circled around several times, yeah, and it was like, all right, I guess it's Mexican.
Well, you know, that's, that's going to be in the handbook, our secret parking spots. See, that's the problem. We have to put those in the handbook, otherwise you forget where they are, okay?
The other thing I'd like, when we have a report back on the parking district, is certainly would like to know how the new handheld devices are going, and how they're, if they're tracking the in and out of people with that two-hour window, what?
They're not.
We don't need to wait for the report.
There you got your report, right there.
We are, we are looking, I'm actually reviewing two different ones right now, that we might change to a different handheld unit, and one of them, actually, I'm a little bit interested, where I'm trying to get a proposal from the company, actually does the automatic license plate reading, so they don't have to enter the number in, so I'm kind of waiting to see on that. The other one, we are, we are testing right now, and it appears to be doing pretty much what we want to do. There was one question they had on it, that we're trying to get an answer on, so...
Really, really appreciate your diligence in continuing to explore that issue, because I think that's the, probably the biggest issue with the, with the parking, appreciate your diligence on it, you creative thought, so, yeah, just keep us posted.
Yeah, and we all, as a council, should probably get Aaron some sort of special Christmas present, because that woman has had to deal with an awful lot of the blowback from our decisions. Anyway...
And just, if I can, just quickly, I'll add, I've been wanting to send a letter out to the businesses on this, but just to the public and everybody, in order to appeal a citation, please go through the process that's online, don't, don't come to the fourth floor, because Aaron's going to tell you to go through the process, so...
So where would people find that process?
It's on the, it's on the back of the citation.
Okay, on the back of the ticket, okay, great.
So, Cleve, when, do you give citations, do they, are parking people give citations when you, when, when a car is like parked over the white line, I mean, when they're taking up two places, okay, because I've been seeing a lot of that, too. And you mentioned something about, because I know we've had a lot of complaints, me included, in the garage, that the spaces are so small that you cannot park and get out of your car, and you said something about you were going to restriping?
Yeah, that's one of the first projects we want to do, now that we do have some funding, we're, we hope, anyway, when we are able to evaluate and see that the funding is there, we want to restripe those compact spaces.
Great, okay.
Very good, okay. Anything else? Anything else, anything? Okay, great.
Thank you.
City manager and staff reports, do you have anything? Okay, great. Upcoming items, items tentatively scheduled for next, for the next regularly scheduled city council meeting on November 28, 2017 include the Calpers Report, Water and Sewer Rate Study, Purchase of Water Reclamation Facility Screen, and a Measure J Report. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our meeting. I want all of you to go out and have a wonderful Thanksgiving, lots of turkey, lots of ham, lots of stuffing, lots of good times. We'll see y'all back here on the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. Thank you very much.